Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome back. Let's hope that 2024 is a year of great opportunity for this council and for this city. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the Council, and we're ready to begin today's meeting. Public comment will be taken today, both in person in the council chamber and also by teleconference. Mr. Clerk, if you could, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Blumenfield, DeLeon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavsky, 12 members present and in the corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes of December 15th, 2023.
Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Soto Martinez moves. Councilmember Yaroslavsky seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute.
Yes, thank you. So for the first flag salute of the year, I'd like to ask Councilmember Park if he would please lead us.
Thank you. Please rise and face the flag. Hand over your hearts, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, can we please run through the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. Items 4 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 17 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Very good. Without objection, those items are now before us, members. Do any members have items that you would like to call special? Any specials? Councilmember Park.
I'd like to call item 2 special for an amending motion, please.
Item 2 for an amending motion, and do we have the amending motion, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President.
Can you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Yes. The motion reads that I move that item number 2 on today's council agenda be amended to adopt the following. One, determine that the issuance of a liquor license at Total Wine &amp; More located at 12015 Wilshire Boulevard will serve the public convenience or necessity and will not tend to create a law enforcement problem. Two, grant the application for determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of alcoholic beverages for both onsite and offsite consumption at Total Wine &amp; More located at 12015 Wilshire Boulevard. And three, instruct the city clerk to transmit this determination to the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control as required findings on our Business and Professions Code, Section 23958.4.
Very good. And is there a second for that motion? Councilmember Hutt. Councilmember Hutt, seconds. All right, thank you. Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much.
Delated happy 1-5 day, Mr. McCosker.
Happy 1-5 day. I hope we all kept to the true meaning of 1-5 day and celebrated it in our own way. I would like to pull item 11, call it special, just to move the personnel report, and I'll need a second for that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Item 9 for comments, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Hi. Happy New Year, Council President. I'd like 7 for an amendment, which is being circulated now, and then 8 for comments.
Okay, very good. And, Mr. City Attorney, do you have the amendment?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead and read that into the record, please.
The amendment reads that I move that item 7 on today's council agenda be amended to revise the third instruction to add the following bolded language below. Three, instruct the CAO with the chief legislative analyst in coordination with the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority and the County of Los Angeles to report to the council with a timeline to develop a transparent funding formula for interim housing bed rates that includes all city contracts for interim housing, and this is the start of the new language, and to provide alongside such formula the cost analysis of requiring all city contracts for interim housing to include a living wage of $25 per hour for all onsite workers in line with the contract analysis instructions initiated by Councilmember Ramon's homelessness services workforce motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Councilmember Yaroslavsky, seconds. All right, members, any other items that you would like to call special? Any other specials on my right? Any other specials on my left? Going once, going twice? All right. Mr. Clerk, what is available now for us to vote on?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items 4 through 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12 through 16.
All right, those items are now before us. If there's no member wishing to be heard on any of those items, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, the council may now vote on item 7, called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez for an amendment. Soto Martinez, Yaroslavsky.
All right. That item is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard? I see none. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
All right. Mr. Clerk, next item.
The council may now consider item 9, called special by Councilmember Rodriguez, for comments.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it was beginning in June 14th, 2022, that we had, through 2027, that we have an agreement established for fulfillment of a minimum number of beds that will help us become in compliance with the alliance settlement. And the reason why I called this item special for remarks today is because I wanted to just, this is an obligation that we have as a city, and while we have a number of efforts to combat homelessness in the city of Los Angeles, what I think our highest and most important priority is to make sure that we are in fulfillment of this obligation and this agreement that was established. There was a great deal of effort by this council for, over the course of several years, to come to the terms of this agreement. But with limited resources and projections from both the state, the federal level in terms of deficits, and even some of the own constraints that we have within our own budgets, I think it's critically important that when we're talking about homelessness, that among the priorities that we must maintain is fulfillment of that agreement and those obligations. There's a minimum threshold of beds that we must obligate ourselves to providing through 2027. And I want to bring to light, and I made these comments that while we were in committee, how important it is that we continue to all coalesce our resources. Every single dollar that we allocate to address homelessness should be prioritized in a manner that fulfills this contractual obligation that we have with the federal courts. We also have an opportunity to ensure that what we do will help us take full advantage of the most recent agreement that was also established with the county's settlement agreement with the alliance. So I just wanted to bring light, this is, you know, happy 2024, but the obligations that we have to meet when it comes to homelessness needs to ensure that everything that we do, with every dollar that we expend, that we are contractually providing those rooms that are in fulfillment of that alliance agreement. This is a federal court oversight obligation that we have. And we, as a city, irrespective of what level you're sitting at, whether it's at the legislative branch, whether it's at the executive branch, we all need to be working in concert with one another to fulfill that obligation that we have as one city. And I wanted to make sure that I brought light to that conversation in this report. I want to thank the CAO's office for all of their efforts to help, you know, through our efforts with roadmaps and everything that we've done to continue to meet these obligations, that we all continue to remain focused on one of the most fundamental pieces that we have to complete when it comes to homelessness, and that is to not be out of compliance when it comes to this agreement. That is a critical issue that we must all be focused in helping to fulfill and achieve, and I want to make sure that with any dollar that anyone has access to, that they have discretion of when it comes to homelessness, that they're working to fulfill this critical obligation that is contractually obligated by this city to meet, and with the goal and the targets of those nearly 13,000 beds in total, citywide. And again, this is a floor, not a ceiling, but it's something that we all must remain vigilant to helping to fulfill so that we can have some level of great progress that we can actually identify and fulfill. This is meaningful work that we have all, that this body had, many members of this body had been engaged in conversation with, with the alliance settlement agreement, with the previous city attorney for some time. And so it's important that all of us continue to work towards fulfilling those goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Councilmember Rodriguez. You're certainly right. Reaching that settlement and that commitment was difficult work, took a long time. It was not aspirational. It was not intended to be aspirational. It is a commitment of the city of Los Angeles, and the city of Los Angeles will meet that commitment with urgency, one way or the other. But it's important that each council office is engaged with individual urgency so that we can make sure that that commitment is met in a way that is consistent with the needs of each individual neighborhood and community of this city as well. So, thank you for those comments. All right, that item is now before us. If there's no further comments, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Clerk, I think we voted on an item number 8 that had been called special, so I'd like to ask that we reconsider item 8. So we'll have to vote first on reconsideration. On reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All right. Item 8 is now before us, so I'd like to call on Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. This item is about trying to look at CIFD, which is the Community Investment Family Department, as the sole, sort of, one of its central missions is to homelessness, to look at them as being the central department to do homelessness prevention, which I think it's a great idea, but we'll see what the report comes back. But, you know, we know that the CIFD does family source centers, they do a lot of work around domestic violence, human trafficking, they did the Big Leap program, looking at guaranteed basic income for the city of Los Angeles. All this is absolutely essential to homelessness prevention. They also manage $300 million in federal, state, and local funds through the Consolidated Fund, they manage over 130 contracts, they've been a wonderful department. Usually their vacancy rate is around less than 10%. Right now it's actually at 5%. But if we're going to really look at CIFD to be the number-one department to do homelessness prevention, we have to really look at how the department is doing right now. Their budget grew by 68%, but their staffing only grew up by 5%. And as I mentioned, their current vacancy rate is at 5%. So if we're going to really look at CIFD as being the department whose homelessness prevention, we got to make sure that we give them the support that they need, the staffing that they need, the budget that they need, in order to make that happen. I have no doubt that this could be the right department to lead this work, but I think we really got to make sure that this body supports that. And so I just want to make those comments, and looking forward to the report and see what comes back. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. Happy New Year, everybody. I just want to echo the comments by my colleague, Councilmember Soto Martinez. CIFD does a phenomenal job, and yet, right now, they have to turn people away because they don't have enough resources. But they serve thousands and thousands of people, and it would be great for them to get all the resources they need so that they can serve all the people that they have coming to their doors and to expand to the work that they're already doing, because they do things like provide car seats. That is preventing people from falling into an economic crisis, because these things are expensive. They provide different social safety nets and do that through our family source centers. So I'm just grateful that they do that, and I want to make sure that they get enough resources to support that work. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be heard? All right. This item, then, is now before us again, so let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLeon.
I just want to call item 25 special.
Item 25?
Yes, for comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, what is now before us?
Mr. President, the council may now proceed to presentations.
Very good. Then I'd like to call on Councilmember Blumenfield. Councilmember Blumenfield, if you're prepared on your first presentation honoring American Legion Post 826. Councilmember Blumenfield, you have the floor.
Happy 2024, everybody. Well, one of the great things about this year is the Legion Post 826 in Woodland Hills is celebrating 75 years of being a post. They are an incredible asset to our community, and I'm honored to have with me today Roger Chartrand, the commander of the American Legion Post 826 in Woodland Hills, as well as Michelle Kaufman and Dwayne Buckley here. They're active members of the Legion. Commander Chartrand and his fellow Legionnaires recently celebrated this 75th anniversary of the post. The post was established in 1948, and its members met with a large tent on an empty lot until Harry Warner donated an old Warner Brothers stable and makeup room for the post to use in 1952. We were just talking about that history this morning. And since then, the building has transitioned to really become a pillar within our community. In its 75 years, Post 826 has opened its doors to serve the West Valley and become a place of community and fellowship. At Post 826, you'll find scout dinners, community meetings, neighborhood council meetings, big band dances, fundraisers for first responders, and most importantly, Post 826 serves as a home to help returning service members who are transitioning back into our community. And of course, we know it's not just the building that makes the Legion Post an outstanding organization, but it's its dedicated members. These are folks who have dedicated years of their lives to military service, and upon coming home, they find themselves called to further serve, but to serve in our communities here at home. They raised money to support scout troops and first responders. They've provided mentorship, scholarship, and educational opportunities for young people, and dedicated thousands of volunteer hours to the VA Medical Centers in Los Angeles, not to mention donating money and goods to assist recovering veterans. Outside of the post, its members further extend their volunteerism by serving on community committees and nonprofit boards. Post 826 and the Legionnaires truly exemplify what it means to be a patriotic American. In honor of their 75 years of service, the American Legion has provided the West Valley and Los Angeles. I'd like to take a moment now and present them with this certificate of recognition that is signed by all of the members of this body. So please accept this small token of appreciation. Thank you so much. Commander Chartrand will say a word.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to thank the entire chamber here for hearing the wonderful presentation that Councilman Blumenfield did. He hit all the big points. I just want to say that we take great pride in serving our community. We are in the West San Fernando Valley in Woodland Hills, California, and, you know, making 75 years is a big deal for a post, because a lot of the posts are not making it that far, because, of course, people are aging out. So if you have relatives or know of people that are former service people, please tell them about the American Legion Post that might be in their neighborhood, because we want to keep this organization moving forward, and we want to ensure the perpetuity of our organization. So thank you again so much for having us here today. We sincerely appreciate your attention, and we appreciate all of you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you get a photo? Yes. Can I have a photo, sir? Yep.
Thank you so much for your service. Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, and another big round of applause for the Legion Post 826. And as they're headed back for photos, we have another presentation that I'm very excited about from Councilmembers Yaroslavsky and Blumenfield. about, from Councilmembers Jaroslawski and Blumenfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for joining me up here. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Uh, I feel really lucky to be giving one of the first presentations of the new year. Uh, I assure you, these two individuals are well worth the honor that we are gonna be giving them today. Rabbi Marvin Hyer, Marlene, thank you for joining us and bringing your families, some of whom came all the way from Chicago, to be here. All your grandchildren, most of your grandchildren? Many of them? Many of them. And, and children. So the contributions that these two people have made to our city, to our nation, to our planet are significant. I'm gonna just touch on a couple of them, because we're limited for time. Forty-seven years ago, Rabbi Hyer came to Los Angeles to establish the Simon Wiesenthal Center, an international Jewish human rights organization focused on confronting antisemitism and hate of all kinds. Just a year later, Marlene, who I just found out was a city planner by training, joined as a grant writer and head of membership. The Museum of Tolerance, which grew out of the Simon Wiesenthal Center, opened in 1993. It's welcomed 7.5 million people from all over the world of all faiths and backgrounds, challenging us all to understand the lessons of the Holocaust and confront all forms of prejudice and discrimination in our world, uh, which that work is unfortunately more important today than it's, than it's possibly ever been. As if that weren't enough, Rabbi Hyer is also a two-time Academy Award winner. Awards he won as executive producer of Mariah Films. These two films educated broader audiences around the world about the Holocaust and its tragic aftermath. Rabbi, Marlene, I cannot thank you enough for all you've given to all of us in Los Angeles and beyond. A couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of speaking with the inaugural class of the Jewish Federation's, um, New Leaders Initiative, and we talked about leadership. And something we talked about was how a good leader doesn't just climb the ladder of success until they're in a position of power, but they reach down that ladder, and they, and they bring people along with them. They build the foundation and then encourage people to stand up on their own two feet and give them a hand up. And that's exactly what you two have done over and over again for Jewish leaders across our city and, and further. So thank you so much. I'm gonna keep it short. I'm gonna introduce my colleague, Bob Blumenfield, to say a few words as well.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Jaroslawski, and really, thank you for, for bringing this incredible presentation and honor for the, for Rabbi Hyer. It is really important and well deserved. He is one of the most important, this is one of the most important centers for human rights in the city, was established almost 50 years ago, the Simon Wiesenthal Center. The Museum of Tolerance, which is the educational arm of the Wiesenthal Center, challenges visitors to confront bigotry, antisemitism, and hate toward all people. Since opening the museum, it's hosted more than 3.5 million children and youth that participated in the museum experiences and its programs. I've been there, I'm sure many of you have been there, my kids have been there on school trips. It is, it is an institution that makes a difference. And this could not have happened without the vision of Rabbi Hyer, who wanted a place for people of all races, colors, and creeds to go and discover, to discover what evil is out there, and how we can all together look out for one another, to fight against this evil, and maybe just learn to tolerate, not just tolerate, but to accept and work with each other. I know that the history is incredible. Frank Sinatra helped Rabbi Hyer raise money to build the Wiesenthal Center and continue to open doors. I know the rabbi has met with world leaders, six popes, uh, even introduced two Oscar-winning documentaries, making him the only rabbi to receive an Academy Award. It's, it's just incredible. And so we're celebrating a person who was born to poor parents, whose parents came from Poland, founded the center in conjunction with famed Nazi hunter Simon Wiesenthal.
One second, Mr. Blumenfield.
Can we remove this person, please?
So whoever's shouting out in the back, I believe that they are wearing a black jacket and a black hat. So General Dogon, you are, this is your first and only warning, do not disrupt this meeting. If you do so, you will be removed pursuant to rule, Council Rule 7 and 12.
Well, as if on cue, we needed another reminder that there is hate out there, and we need organizations like this to be there to fight hate and to remind us of the consequences when hate like this grows and, and, and turns into the ugliness that it, we know it has become, with the, the biggest example being the Holocaust. So I wanna, I wanna thank the disruptor for reminding us about that. And really, I wanna just, I mean, this is a rabbi who's met with presidents, met with Obama. The, the center is an NGO, United Nations, UNESCO organization. Uh, it is an incredible organization. So Katie, thank you again for bringing this. Marlene, Rabbi, thank you so much for your service, for that, that you've done for, for our community, our larger Los Angeles community, and really for the world community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield. It's now my privilege to introduce Rabbi Cooper, who is Rabbi Hyer's partner and Ms. Vogt. So I'd like him to come up and say a few words. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Happy New Year. In our ancient Judaic teachings, the ethics of the fathers teaches us, who is a person worthy of honor? He who respects all God's creations. Rabbi Marvin and Marlene Hyer learned this worldview from their immigrant parents in New York many years ago. I personally witnessed and saw how they taught this by example during the rabbi's 15-year tenure in Vancouver, British Columbia. And since 1977, all Angelinos have witnessed and benefited from Rabbi Hyer's scholarship, creative vision, faith, and actions. Rabbi Hyer created bridges among his fellow Jews and across religious and cultural divides based on another Jewish victim. In remembrance lies the root of redemption, in forgetfulness, the roots of destruction. In 1977, Rabbi Hyer with the blessing of Holocaust survivor and heroic campaigner for justice, Simon Wiesenthal. On that day, Rabbi Hyer became a senior partner in protecting and promoting memory as a sacred, universal value. It's been my singular honor to be with him each step of the way. It is only right that 46 years later, we come back here to Los Angeles City Hall in these chambers, where the late, great Mayor Tom Bradley and members of the City Council opened the city's heart to that very idea and helped Rabbi Hyer and his staff and Marlene to launch the Simon Wiesenthal Center and the Museum of Tolerance. It is an honor to represent my colleagues from the center in thanking the council for honoring a mentor and a leader who was always led by example. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Cooper. I'd like to have Councilmember Blumenfield join me to make this presentation, and then ask Rabbi Hyer to say a few words.
There are no words to express my appreciation to the City Council of Los Angeles for this singular honor. One of the most interesting quotes of the Talmud is this, "Who is a wise man? He who sees what will be born into the future." Since the opening of the Museum of Tolerance in February 1993, when Mayor Tom Bradley and Governor Jerry Brown held hands and danced with Simon Wiesenthal, the Los Angeles City Council recognized the essential role that a museum of tolerance, which would serve the diverse people of Los Angeles, would have not only on the city, but on the world. For the past 30 years, the City of Los Angeles has partnered with the Museum of Tolerance and has engaged in numerous educational, cultural, and civic endeavors. The museum has provided programming that addresses today's issues, training tens of thousands of officers and police from the LAPD and other law enforcement agencies. In addition, thousands of local educators have participated in the museum's Tools for Tolerance for Professionals, its award-winning SHADS, which stands for Stopping Hate and Delinquency by Empowering Students program in participation with the LA Superior Court. More than, as was said before, more than 7.5 million visitors from around the world have visited the Museum of Tolerance, including millions of students from the Los Angeles Unified School District. Since the inception, world leaders such as King Hussein of Jordan not only visited the Museum of Tolerance, but became an active member of the Museum of Tolerance. Other world leaders included the Dalai Lama, the leaders of Bahrain, five presidents of the United States, six prime ministers of Israel, Prime Minister Tony Blair of Great Britain, and major leading celebrities and leaders from the entertainment community. The Museum of Tolerance objective has always been that is, it is not sufficient to condemn bigotry and antisemitism, but to provide, we need to provide the educational tools to prevent it from happening in the first place. Given the unprecedented hatred that has now engulfed our world in the streets, on university campuses, in schools, there has never been a greater need for a museum of tolerance which promotes diversity and human dignity than now. It is beyond belief that the leaders of the most prominent universities ignored the blatant antisemitic uprising on their campuses. Rather than condemn the perpetrators, they endorsed it by their silence. Our planet has already experienced two horrific world wars. We cannot afford another world catastrophe. There are already far too many planets in our universe that have gone silent. We don't want our planet to go silent. As Simon Wiesenthal ruined the world, freedom is not a gift from heaven, he said. You have to fight for it each and every day. That's what the Museum of Tolerance does here in Los Angeles, thanks to people like the City Council. My appreciation to Councilwoman Katie Jaroslawski and Councilmember Blumenfield for their kind words and initiating this honor to me and my wife, the Simon Wiesenthal family. And thank you to Mayor Karen Bass and to all the members of the Los Angeles City Council. I can assure you, your honor that you have bestowed upon us, we will always cherish it. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and God bless you all.
I think we can all join in wishing Rabbi Hyer a very happy, healthy, long retirement. Thank you for all your service to both of you.
Thank you so much. It's the rabbi, Councilmember Jaroslawski, and Blumenfield. With that, uh, we'll thank the members. We're now moving on to public comment on agenda items noticed for public hearing and items for which public hearings have not been held. Please note, today's meeting includes a call-in option for public comment. Public comment will be taken both in person in the council chamber as well as via teleconference. Mr. Clerk, would you please read out the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound, then press pound again when prompted for a participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask for press star 6 to unmute. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound, then press pound again when prompted for a participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask for press star 6 to unmute.
To members of the public wishing to provide public comment, we have a slightly new procedure. When it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to immediately and clearly get on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are 1 through 3 and 17 through 25. So again, that's items 1 through 3 and 17 through 25. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment, which will be held at the end of the meeting. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or you'll unfortunately forfeit your time, and we will have to move on to the next speaker. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star 6 to unmute. Second, if you're listening to this meeting on another device, please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it is your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you.
All right, we'll begin by calling the first set of names. When your name is called, if you could line up on your left, my right aisle, and then come up to the podium in any order.
Rabbi Zush Cunnin, Greenspan, John Scooter, Ada Murillo, Adriana Avila, Alan Smithy, Brian Kowalczuk.
And you do not need to speak in the order in which your name was called. Uh, and remember, this is for the, uh, public comment on the agenda items only. So general public comment will be at the end of this meeting. Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Yeah, good morning, Happy New Year. John Scooter here. Uh, just to confirm and concur here, uh, four and five, we are speak, hearing, we can speak on or no?
This is for everyone. The only items that are open for public comment are 1 through 3 and 17 through 25. So if you would like to speak to any other item, any of the other items, you can do so during general public comment at the end of this meeting.
Right. So, uh, I did wanna speak on four and five, so we'll jump to item number 21 and 25.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items.
Okay, um, on item 25, uh, when it talks about transferring funds of $120,000, basically for graffiti busters, and... for graffiti busters, and this is Deleon's motion, I don't think that should be transferred from there. I think it should be transferred from the bridge fund. This council did vote, and we do have $720,000 that was allocated for graffiti removal on the bridge, and we hardly have to use that. I drive that bridge every morning. I see the maintenance of what it's done, and I don't think we're spending the $720,000 that was allocated for graffiti removal on the bridge. I think it would be a better place to take the funds from and apply that to that. Also, if you guys need graffiti removal, you can call my company, we do that too. On item twenty-five, this got moved to special or is this still public?
I'm sorry, which item are you speaking to?
Twenty-five. Is this special or can we speak on it or not?
I believe you're already speaking to item number twenty-five, and it is open, but I believe you've also exhausted your one minute on that item. So are there any of the other items you'd like to speak to?
Well, I was going to speak on twenty-five, but if I'm done, I'll save for your own comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, for, just for clarity, the only people that are on my list who've signed up for items that are eligible for comment at this point are Thomas Nagano, Rabbi Cunin, Herman, and Greenspan. So if we could have them come up, please, now and speak on the agenda items.
If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
I signed up on the kiosk with my name, sir, and he just announced my name. Is that correct?
Which items would you like to speak to?
I'm going to speak on all items and non-agenda public comment, which shall give me four minutes.
So you have three minutes for the items that are open for public comment?
Twenty-four, I wish to speak on all items.
That's one through three and seventeen through twenty-five, so please begin.
So you know what's very interesting about what the rabbi said regarding the Holocaust?
That's not one of our agendized items, Mr. Herman. Speak to the agenda.
Sir, sir, I'm giving a scenario about fine wine and spirits. So fine wine and spirits are always a subject to talk about. And as rabbis and those like Jesus Christ that created water into wine is a subject of why this convenience of necessity is important to the public, to understand that you continue to pollute, you continue to destroy, you continue to create a disease among the public for an application located in the off-site consumption at 12015 Wilshire Boulevard. So that is the subject. You are killing people with your public necessity for fine wine and spirits. So as a rabbi, they give out wine and spirits just as Jesus did, but Jesus didn't want people to become dependent and influenced by drugs. I'm on item number three, sir. I just finished number two, so why are you interrupting me? Why are you interrupting me, sir? Your job as the attorney is to do your job.
So please stick to the topic.
Okay, so don't interrupt me on item number three, at 428 East Second Street. Like, we really need more spirits. I mean, I don't see Deleon getting into trouble with spirits. The only people getting into trouble with spirits are people who are addicted, influenced by our government, Los Angeles City Hall council people, who continue to provide us with the necessity for alcohol sales for fine wine and spirits and alcohol consumption and beverages. That's the problem. So don't confuse me for your bullshit. It's a fact. So now I go into the other items regarding, again, 13,000 beds to fulfill. Well, with the previous attorney, take for example, again, what did Peter Thomas do? He ripped off all the people that are now homeless because he was gouging us with DWP increased bills.
So Speaker, I can't tell which item you're on. Please identify the.
I'm on item eighteen, sir. You should pay goddamn attention. You know, you make people upset. I'm trying to be courteous. I'm trying to be polite.
Don't argue with the city attorneys. Speak to the agenda items, or your time will be expired.
On the issue under Rahman and Ms. Yorolovsky, who's not seated here. However, it was Ms. Rodriguez that said we need to reach a settlement or commitment to fulfill 13,000 beds. And it's not happening. You're disgraceful, and you haven't changed a pattern and practice of corruption. Fuck you.
Next speaker. All right. That is all of, I've called the names of all the people who've signed up for agenda items. Is there anybody else who wish to speak to items one through three or seventeen through twenty-four here in the chambers? All right, let's go then next to the callers who are on the phone to speak about the agenda items one through three and seventeen through twenty-four.
First virtual speaker. What items would you like to speak on? Speaker with the last four digits 8130, please press star six to mute yourself.
Speaker with the last four digits eight one three zero, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to unmute. Next caller.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
And again, while we're waiting, for the speakers who would like, who are calling in and would like to speak on the items open for public comment, that's items one through three and seventeen through twenty-five, please press star nine to raise your hand to speak.
Caller with the last four digits thirty-seven eighty-four, please press star six to mute yourself.
Yes, we can hear you, caller. Which items would you like to speak to?
All right, I'd like to speak on all items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, so I have, let's see, we have item twenty-one, which is a motion from Kevin Deleon. Kevin Deleon shouldn't have anything passed by the agenda, passed by the council. He shouldn't have anything on the agenda to begin with. You shouldn't be approving his motions. I don't care what it is. This man's a racist. He shouldn't have anything approved by this council. But you're all just going to keep doing that because apparently you're okay with him. Item twenty-two, another Kevin Deleon motion. Looks like this one's approving a permit for an event that already happened. Does that mean that Kevin Deleon's event did not have a proper permit? You know, the LAPD regularly, in the city regularly target, you know, things for not having a permit. You know, a kid wants to have a lemonade stand, you know, shut that down. If, you know, protest comes out of the permit, send in the, we'll send in the SWAT team. But, you know, but Kevin Deleon wants to have an event without a permit, then that's fine, I guess. Because, you know, you're approving the permit now, the event already happened. So, you know, it's really weird. We have, item twenty-five is a winter break camp from Kevin Deleon. He was seen at those events. Was he doing all those weird stuff that he does with kids at those events, like just feeling them up on their body and all kinds of stuff?
Caller, I'm going to ask that you stick to the agenda items.
I'm speaking to the agenda item. It's the winter break camp. I'm talking about how Kevin acts around kids. And he was at the event. You can check his Instagram page. So, again, he's just trying to bolster his image ahead of the reelection campaign that he's going to lose. So, yeah. Let's see, don't really see too much else, but, but yeah, he needs to resign and, you know, it's easy to make a point of order to put public comment back where it belongs at or near the beginning of the meeting, like it says in the council.
So this is not on the items that are open for public comment? So please speak to the items, or you can speak to that during general public comment?
Yeah, which should be right now, per council of seven, or if not, not apply the call.
So, next caller?
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio C. I'd like to speak on the available items as well as the general public comment.
So you can speak to the available items now, so you have three minutes for items one through three and seventeen through twenty-five.
What about the general public comment? You mean, can people wait?
So that will be at the end of the meeting. So please begin.
Okay, so I'm, right, but I'm registering under this name, Eric Previn, that I'd like to make one, so you'll be denying me when you blow me off as you always do. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Hugo Soto Martinez for reaching for Indiegov the way Jarzlosky did. This is a group that is expert at cultivating the people who you've brought in during campaigning, making promises and getting constituents behind you. And what they do is they get the government to pay the forty-five grand, but you get to keep a lot of the good data so that when you're thrown out, which will be in a few years, you know, you get all that great contact information. And, you know, the whole promise is, we do a much better job than actual city staff because we're kind of, I don't want to say AI, but look, it's all the same bullshit, they feel, if you're working for Congress or the Senate or the county. You know, they know how to get to people, get on their desk, make them feel like you're doing a great job. And so, that's awesome. I mean, you know, boy, if only it was so easy. And now, in terms of wine and spirits and liquor and all that, now, people don't need to really look twice to notice that we're running people down everywhere. It's tragic beyond belief. Blumenfield, if he gets finished with Dr. Rabbi Heyer, will know because his district, they are motoring down people almost on a daily basis. So we have to curb the alcohol that we're pouring right in. This is not at a gas station as it was last week when Krikorian was shuffling off for the, by the way, today at the County Board of Supervisors, there is a deeply moving Armenian presentation that has been going on.
That's not on our agenda. Stick to the agenda, go to general.
No, I'll get back to the, yeah, I'm back. Look, I was supportive of Krikorian. Don't be dickish. It's not necessary.
Speak to the agenda item, or I'm going to cut off your time.
I'm going, I'm going to say it, item seventeen. Item seventeen, well, item twenty-one is graffiti busters. I have been a longstanding advocate for calling out the insanity that is the idea that we have to pour hundreds of thousands of dollars into paint removal from people who can't afford to have this paint. I mean, it's a scam. There is an absolute scam underway, and I hope that people know it. It's a long time scam, and we should really crack down on it. And, you know, I want to also thank Metro and, you know, obviously Krikorian, Bonin, and now Jarzlosky, the people who represent the city, but for signing a contract with ACOM right after Garcetti left.
So this is not open for public comment right now? So you've been warned multiple times, so you're forfeiting the rest of your speaking time?
No, I'm on the right of entry, right of.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Yeah, hi, Daniel Gus. All items and general public comment, and I want to stay on in queue for general later.
But you have three minutes for the items that are open for public comment. Please begin.
Great, starting my clock. Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome back. Glad to see most everybody got back. Items number two and three, I, listen, we all know, you need the tax revenue, you need the licensing revenue, you need the political cash for getting these permits issued. Can you just be transparent with the public, please? And tell us, what is the necessity part of alcohol access? We understand the convenience, we understand the tax dollars and the finances of it. Can somebody just please stand up so we have to, don't have to keep asking this question? What is the necessity of having more alcohol when it's literally every few steps, people are literally dying, as my friend Eric Previn said? He has a great column, he writes about this from time to time on City Watch. I write about it, this very subject on danielgus.substack.com. And somebody just please explain what the necessity is, so we can move on to other business. Item number twenty, for an action in the Ninth District, the new Ninth, why is Mr. Krikorian the maker of this motion? Where is Councilmember Price? Why is it not a Price motion? Why is it a Krikorian motion? It would help, because as many of you know, Mr. Price, in whose district item twenty is about, was finally indicted on ten counts of corruption yesterday, which I, a story which I broke in 2017. So the question is, is Mr. Price's activities for which he is facing the rest of his life in prison, is that the reason why he's not the maker of item number twenty? Why is it Mr. Krikorian? Why aren't the people of the new Ninth District getting the representation that they chose? Nothing against you, Mr. Krikorian, but Mr. Price should be the maker of this motion, and it would help if there's transparency on that issue. Item number twenty-one, this is another example of why Kevin Deleon is going to be reelected. He is doing the nuts and bolts stuff of his district, and he got, he got a rough deal in this situation with the Nury Martinez Gill chaos and Ron Herrera, but this is actually a seasoned politician doing the nuts and bolts stuff that will keep him in office, although I take exception with calling graffiti removal beautification. And by the way, as Eric Previn said, number twenty-three, who is Indiegov? Could you please be more transparent about who these people are? Nothing against them, but please be more transparent about this on the agendas. I'll be back for general public comment.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Yes, good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Eight, one eight eight one. I'd like to speak on all items available and later public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items that are open for public comment. That would be one through three and seventeen through twenty-five. So please begin and stick to the items only.
Yes, as long as Mr. Krikorian will give me the right for public comment. First of all, in regards to the wine and spirit, you know, it's amazing, we seem to always open up those locations around the homeless and where we have situations within our community that really don't need another liquor store. When it comes to restaurants and businesses like that, that's a different story. That's something that I think we should all look at and see if we can provide the businesses with an opportunity to stay operative. In regards to the graffiti, you know, I worked with the Van Nuys and Devonshire for over twenty-five years, and we did it for free. There's a way to do it for free if you work with the nonprofits who are there to serve the community. The graffiti busters are a great group of people, but who's behind it? Who's on the board? Where is that money going through? And we have a new type of graffiti called tire graffiti. Every community is being affected by that because of these knuckleheads who come into our community and use their cars to make circles and to destroy our streets and leave tire graffiti. So Mr. Krikorian, I will be waiting, and I'm over here at Bernie's. I'm here at Bernie's, wait for you to allow me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits ninety-five nineteen, please press star six to mute yourself.
Yes, Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, Mr. Jason, I would like to scan you.
I'm sorry, which items would you like to speak to?
Um, I think I'm going to skip the items today because I feel like Krikorian is just going to be a dick about it anyway.
Okay, so if you're going to skip the items, then we're going to move on to the next caller, because this is for the items open for public comment only.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on? Speaker with the last four digits seventy-seven nineteen, please press star six to mute yourself. Speaker, this is your last chance before we move on. Seven seven one nine, please press star six to mute yourself. star six to mute yourself.
All right, let's go to the next caller, we'll take three more callers.
There are no more speakers in the virtual queue.
Okay, that'll close uh public comment on all agenda items. Mr. Clerk, uh what is now available for us to vote on?
Mr. President, the the council may now vote on items one through three and seventeen through twenty-four.
All right, those items are now before us, do any members wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. President, there is a request to send item one forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's next before us, Mr. Clerk?
The council may now consider item twenty-five, call special by Councilmember DeLeon for comments.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLeon.
Thank you much, Mr. President, Happy New Year to each and every one of you, I just want to stand in support of item number twenty-five, which represents a transfer uh to cover the cost of what I would uh describe as a very successful uh winter break uh program for our young boys and girls in CD fourteen. Uh to be specific, uh we were able to uh cover the cost uh for hundreds of young boys and girls, a lot of folks don't realize that during the winter Christmas break uh for a lot of working families, uh it's actually very, very stressful, not just because of bringing all the families together and well, we have enough, you know, financial wherewithal to buy the presents for our children, but the fact that working families still have to work. Uh they're not going off to Aspen, Colorado, or Vail, Colorado, or Sun Valley, Idaho, or going to any other vacation retreats throughout the country, or Palm Springs, or anywhere else, they actually have to work. And as a result, oftentimes they leave their children alone or they have older siblings take care of them. What we did in this case in CD fourteen is the actual total cost on a weekly basis is a hundred and twenty dollars uh per child and we were able to buy out one hundred and ten dollars, therefore the cost was actually ten dollars on a weekly basis, three weeks, three weeks, ending just uh last week Friday, which I think was January eight, uh seven, six, January five, uh January five, I believe, or January six, one of those two days, but uh three weeks, you know, which was uh uh incredibly received by so many families. Just to highlight a couple, uh we did it with thirteen rec centers and it wasn't just childcare, it was soccer, it was basketball, it was trips to Knott's Berry Farm as well, a lot of young boys and girls had never been down to Orange County, let alone to Knott's Berry Farm, but in the El Sano Recreation Center, we served one hundred and sixty-five young boys and girls campers. In the Highland Park Rec Center, we served one hundred and thirty kids, in Rose Hills, which is in the nine double zero three two, we served over one hundred kids over the winter break, and that's just three rec centers out of the thirteen rec centers that we have totally in CD fourteen. So um I'm hoping that this could be utilized as a model throughout the city of LA, but or at the very least, at those rec centers where we have working families and working parents who simply don't have the financial wherewithal to take care of their kids when they're out there working, because if they don't work, they can't pay the rent, if they can't pay the rent, they're out in the streets. That's why this was so critical and I just want to thank my team as well as Rec and Parks for working in a very collaborative effort, coming together to oversee what we would qualify as a very successful program, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, I respectfully ask for, and I vote.
Thank you very much. If there's no other members wishing to be heard, that item is now before us, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Very good, Mr. Clerk, what's now before us?
Mr. President, the council may now proceed to general public comment.
Very good, so um this is now the time for the general public comment portion of our meeting, so I'm gonna call a number of names and as I call your name, please make your way to your left-hand side of the chambers, you do not need to speak in the order that I call you, um but just please don't line up until I call you so that we can uh make sure we have enough room for everybody and the sergeants will show you up to the to the mic. Ada Murillo, Chuck Trujillo, Rabbi Brown, Brian Kowalczuk, Alan Smithy, Matthew Kay, Jonathan Diaz, and Adriana Avila. Good morning.
Hello, uh before you start the clock, uh please, um I'm going to be speaking on an emergency motion for the city council.
So Speaker, we do have to start your clock, but go ahead and continue.
Uh I if we if I could have three minutes, please, I I try to get it on the agenda, sir, I sent a request to your office, the clerk's office, and it wasn't, uh I wasn't able to get it on the agenda.
So again, we we have to give everybody equal time, so you have one minute for general public comment, if you'd like to, you can always submit written comments later.
Okay, uh with city council members, I believe you have the motion right here that I sent over, it has on the front page, um we know what the world can do, if I fall, wait for me. Um we did a lot of research over the holiday with the city charter and the city council rules, city council can vote on this, you can take an oral vote, and this is to close the landlord loophole in the ULA E-RAP program, uh which I was approved for for COVID back grant, but the landlords don't have to apply, which means on February first, I could get an eviction notice. I'm a seventy-year-old handicapped senior and the program is supposed to be prioritizing seniors and handicapped people, so uh this resolution that that we wrote, uh will close that loophole, but you guys need to to vote on it and and pass it and get it to the city attorney. Um so that's what I'm asking for, is an emergency, emergency vote from the city council.
Thank you very much, sir. And my office will continue to work with you on trying to resolve the situation.
We're running out of time, sir.
I understand, next speaker, please.
So you won't vote on it right now then? No?
Well, next speaker? Sir, I need to call the next speaker, that's-
You guys threw a curve ball when you took out item eleven, so I have to squeeze my my speech into one. Ada Murillo, Vice President, Ask Me Local Thirty-Ninety, I appreciate what is in motion right now, but it's not enough for the nine-one-one operators, they are leaving in droves and they deserve better, this is not a creative problem by them and they shouldn't have to suffer. On another issue, I reported misconduct with the potential of criminal charges from the theft from the city to the LAPD, leadership failed to act on it, instead I have been retaliated against and called the civilian mafia. The system in LAPD is broken and it needs to be fixed, they cannot continue to police themselves, I'm asking for the city to help me implement city charter to make changes, LAPD should no longer um investigate themselves, it should be outside, I should be free to practice my union activities and support my members and free from retaliation and harassment and slander, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, come on up, please. I didn't call you, Herman.
You called Rabbi Brown, sir, I'm here, thank you, thank you, see, you gone silent and that's the reason why the public callers are upset because you don't bother to call them back to speak on non-agenda public comment. And you're probably gonna close the time due to the fact that you're racist, prejudiced, and discriminatory against people participating, it's a fact, we see in the argument between the city attorney and myself, trying to be practical, trying to be nice, but you can't be nice to an asshole like that. So the issue is here whether we's are or Korea have problems with access to alcohol, the answer, yes, can I be silent? No, why? Because when you had the rabbi in here talking about tolerance, he didn't bother to talk about necessity, because he knows for the fact that he got upset when Jesus turned water into wine, not for fun, not to get drunk, but to show the world that there existed God, forty-two SC nineteen eighty-three politely, fuck you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Chuck Trujillo from uh Park Film Office, um Happy New Years to everybody, um as you all know, I'm sure you were, uh we're in negotiations, we have a tentative agreement at this time, we still have some small tables, um and I just appreciate you guys' support and um as as uh some of the reports that you guys receive, hopefully it uh it confirms, you know, that there is a need in in my department, that uh we need some changes there. Um also, the thousand uh forty limitations, there's still ways to work that, um I know that they had all good intentions when they created it, um but it needs to be fixed, uh perhaps through the administrative code or something, but I I still hear throughout the city, you know, the the problems with it and how people are limited, uh you know, and they run out of hours, uh programs get shut down and so forth, but thank you all for your appreciation, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning, city council, my name is Jonathan Diaz, I'm a recreation assistant with the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks, and I am here with my Asme brothers and sisters. I am calling on the city council to use the city administrative code as a mechanism to allow half-timers specifically within recreation and parks to work more than a thousand forty hours in a year. Every year, many recreation assistants work tirelessly to run recreation programs for the city of Los Angeles. The pandem- the pandemic showed that recreation and parks workers are crucial to serving the city. It is imperative that we allow recreation workers represented by Local Seven Forty-One to work more than the allotted twenty hours per week. Many many workers want to work and the admin code should be used to move that forward, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, as our next speaker is coming forward, I'm gonna call a few more names, uh Brian Kowalczuk, Matthew Kay, Alan Smithy, Adriana Avila, Tracy Smith, Kathy Peters, Harriet Elliott, Raymond Liu. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, my name is Adriana Avila and I'm president of Teamsters Local Five Seventy-Two. I'm here to follow up on an email that I sent all the city council members regarding an issue at MV, specifically following up on a report that was ordered by you, uh Mr. President, for the regarding the driver shortage at MV. And I'm fearing that without any intervention from the city council, that report is gonna go from a driver shortage to the absence of drivers. We are currently expected, uh we have an extension agreement with MV till January thirty-first and our story is not unique, nor is it new, but our our members there are working under pre-pandemic contract and pre-pandemic wages and without any intervention, there will lead to, it'll lead to a labor dispute that will disrupt services. Um in the city of Santa Clarita, we were, we just ended an eight-week strike where a hundred percent of our members went out and refused to move buses, we don't want that to happen here. My colleague Tracy Smith will also be giving you some further details, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Tracy Smith and I represent about a hundred and um four-hundred-and-fifty drivers, mechanics, road supervisors and dispatchers currently for the downtown dash and the mid-city central locations, and we are currently in negotiations that are not going well. Um we are asking for you to engage and partner with us to avoid a labor dispute. We will be meeting with MV Transportation the last week in January in order to avoid a labor dispute and a strike. Um and they say that they have no more to offer our members without your allocation of funds to that downtown and mid-city central, so we are asking you to partner with us to avoid a labor strike that will affect downtown and mid-city community.
Speaker, your time has expired? Thank you very much, next speaker, please. Good morning.
Uh good morning, uh my name is Mark Williams, I'm the concerned citizens of South Central Los Angeles Board President and Executive Director, I have a a open letter to Mayor Bass that concerns the city council and I'll submit it, uh but we're asking Mayor Bass and her executive capacity and responsibility to allow all of our affordable housing tenants to pay their rents directly to the city of Los Angeles and that the city of Los Angeles use those rents uh to pay, to well to serve their purpose. Our organization has been commandeered by a bunch of bigoted criminals, uh enabled by indicted Representative Karen Price, Councilman Karen Price, uh our people are suffering, we're being uh, our tenants are suffering and being threatened with eviction while our organization has been commandeered by bigoted criminals, so please read the uh the letter and hopefully support Karen Bass, best efforts.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, council, uh the city council and staff, my name is Raymond Liu, I'm a park uh park film monitor for the city of Los Angeles, I love my job as a film monitor and I am privileged and honored to be a part of uh the great city of Los Angeles, city parks, uh a lot used, many times used by the largest film, television and film production companies. I'm asking for your assistance with just a few items to be, to be just a few, you know, recognized salary, recognition, mileage, compensation and consideration elimination of ten forty, uh thousand forty hours limitation. Mahal for your time and thank you.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Peters, born and raised in LA, I work for Recreation and Parks, I've been there for over thirty years and I've been a proud union member for twenty years. I'm here to ask for more hours for the halftime workers, we negotiated really hard to get halftime benefits um for the city employees and now we want to be able to work more than a thousand forty. We were told for years that there had to be a charter change and we've discovered that it's already in the admin code, it says the 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 city charter only speaks to intermittent employees and we're half-time, so the halftime, according to the city admin code, says that we can work more than a thousand forty but less than full-time and that's our ask today and I'm gonna keep asking every time I come back, thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
My name is Harriet Elliott, when I was here October sixth, uh you guys turned the microphone off me and how did I know that? As I'm leaving the chambers, a very pretty lady said, I agree with you very much, men can be so cruel, I'm like, hmm, okay, what would that mean? So I walked across to the information desk and said, can I see myself on public comment? She said, no, you can see the meeting but no public comment, so that's what happened, I was turned off. Um and here's proof of it also that I wrote someone, um I'm hoping that you guys let me uh get the whole minute now. Okay, uh when I was at CSUN, my teacher, uh being the liberal uh pillar of the liberal community that Michael uh uh the teacher in journalism, okay, Michael Emery, he has a reading room dedicated to him now, I have not hidden this, uh anyway, uh he said that um this woman, meaning myself, I worked in a factory twenty min- uh twenty years, I uh wanted-
Speaker, your time has expired? I'm sorry, your time has expired.
I I think that I didn't get my full minute because I I told you that I the first-
Thank you, you you did actually get your full minute, so I I'm gonna call a few more names.
They said I could read to uh-
Noel Weiss, John Scudder, Corey Schmidt, Fan Friar, Alan Smithy and Dylan Branch, please.
Uh good, council, good morning, how are you? Um couple of suggestions and a comment, Mr. Krikorian- Mr. Krikorian's comment at the end of last session was kind of inspirational and I, my suggestion is that you all consider making a State of the Council speech, ten minutes, sitting here as a legislature, listening to each other for ten minutes at a shot. I think it would do a lot to elucidate the public as well as perhaps each other. That's comment number one. Now, comment number two, we gotta raise the relocation fees, ladies and gentlemen. We last did it in two thousand seven. Since September of two thousand eight to two thousand twenty, a hundred and ten million in relocation fees have been paid out. Uh, we need to double them and triple them to twenty-two and forty-five. It seemed like a lot back in oh-seven when we did it. That's all before your time. Mr. Soto Martinez is a perfect candidate for this. Uh, perhaps Ms. Hutt, perhaps Mr. Harris Dawson. But in any event, I wanna advocate for that. Ms. Rahman most certainly, uh, because tenants are out there. We want to smooth the transition. It doesn't cost the city any money and it's not gonna block any development. I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, City Council Members. A general comment about housing and homelessness be like items six and seven. In the Hollywood area, there's a large homeless population and I don't really notice many bathroom-type facilities for them. So, if you get a chance, you have the funds, I think it would help the homeless especially and the public in general to have more bathroom-type facilities there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Corey Schmidt, all items. Okay, so, uh, looks like I am one of the last speakers, it looks like. Uh, okay, so, uh, well, 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 we are back again. Here we are, uh, and it looks like you guys wanna actually let me speak this time. Krikorian didn't wanna let me speak last two times, I believe. Something about the robot dog over at LAPD or something about surveillance or, I don't know, he's Mr. Technology, so, uh, just wanted to say I'm glad that you allowed public comment today. I think we got two claims for the past two times. So, thank you, Captain, for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
How's everybody doing? Hold on one second. So, John's got a United States Marine Corps veteran. Council members, can I have your attention, please? You guys voted on a pilot program for street vending, where you allow people just to sell food. This pamphlet came out of Kevin DeLeon's office with the rules and regulations that got put in effect by this council January first, uh, January twenty-seventh, three years ago. I pay a five hundred and forty-one dollar fee for my other business for legal street vending. There's all the instructions of what has to go. We don't need a pilot program. The other thing is, even this vending program that this council put in forth is not in compliance with the state regulations out of Sacramento because the street vending laws are the same as what's required for food trucks. Hot water, uh, hand wash sinks, paper towels, et cetera, and sanitary reasons. To allow people to go out and prepare food, uh, without that is an abortion. Otherwise, I'd like a refund on my last three years of my permits.
Thank you, sir.
Krikorian, we went through this once.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, we're gonna go next to callers on the phone. So let's go ahead and take the first caller for general public comment, please.
First caller, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
Hi, DanielGust.substack.com for general public comment.
Yes, please begin.
Okay, starting my clock. Uh, council members, DanielGust.substack.com, LA Press Club's Online Journalist of the Year, LA Press Club's Best Activism Journalist of the Year. Uh, despite all of that, it appears that the LA Fire Department and the LAPD are continuing to retaliate, harass and undermine my efforts, including ongoing misuse of my personal information and interference with my access to information that it is not blocking other credentialed media outlets from accessing. And I implore you to cease and desist from this behavior because it's going to result in additional damages that will be tried at the very same time as others because you have paid me tens of thousands of dollars for this misconduct. You have done the same for hiding public information. Please cease and desist because we're gonna have more damages and more lawsuits.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please begin your one minute of general public comment. Speaker with the last four digits, ninety-five nineteen, please begin.
Yes, my name is Jason. I'm a smoker's can of beer.
You have one minute for general public comment?
Uh, thank, thank you, thank you, sir. Um, my man's smoker's can, about to start a new year, a new stream and stuff. Hopefully we have a few good, um, you know, car chases this week. And on the weekend, we'll be here Friday for the meeting, of course, you know, to see what's going on and then Saturday night, we'll, we'll be there for our regular show there. Um, you can come by and enjoy yourself for a few minutes and, um, you know, Happy New Years and all that. Good shit. Y'all have a good one.
Next caller, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
Happy New Year, City of Los Angeles, City Council. Seven twenty-one, everyone is still in negotiation with contracts. My situation with that is why? You guys had a budget at the beginning of the year. The fiscal year came around and you put money in directions thinking it's gonna be the best suit. Yet you need these people to do the work and they're in negotiations. The only time they're gonna hear from you is now that there's an election going. At the end, it'll be a blind, uh, vote for you because you still won't legislate for them to do the work. Street, uh, services, they need the Arbor Division, they need the sidewalks fixed, uh, the, the streets paved. And instead of repaving everything, you could slurry things and cover it up, but your budget's set up differently. Unless you've been in the trench, you won't know. Monica Rodriguez herself said the one time that she went out on the field and worked, she fell out. So, give the respect to the people that do the work and give them the budget to do it.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
All right, so, general public comment. Um, as you all know, Council Rule Seven says that, um, general public comment shall be taken at or near the beginning of every meeting. Um, you're regularly violating this rule at every single meeting. Apparently, Council Rule Seven only applies when you're violating the Brown Act and City Charter and in a lot of cases, the Constitution. You know, legally banning people from the meetings. But, um, but when, when you just, when it tells you to put general public comment in a certain place, then, oh, well, King Krikorian can just put it wherever because he, he's, you know, all-powerful and doesn't need to change the rules or have a vote as the council. So put it back where it belongs, at or near the beginning of the meeting. Let people use general public comment for items that have been called special, like Nury did. Um, you know, even Nury let people do that, you know. You're actually worse than Nury on that call. Katie L. needs to resign, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Fuck you, everything.
Next caller, please.
Next caller, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go right ahead with your general public comment, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Why is Mayor Karen Bass not present during City Council meetings? When you guys have City Council meetings every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday, the mayor should be present during public comment. That's what everybody's asking. If you look at other cities, um, in California, the mayor is always going to be present during public comment. But this mayor is not. What's going on here? We, the people of the city, the constituents are calling for Mayor Karen Bass to be present during public comment because it's not fair that we elected her into office and she's not there to listen to the problems and concerns and complaints the constituents have. This is not, this is really unacceptable.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank, thank you very much, sir. And just brief response, in most cities, smaller cities, the mayor is a member of the City Council. That is not true in the City of Los Angeles where we have a distinct elected legislative and executive branch. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for giving you, uh, giving me the opportunity here at Uncle Bernie's and in San Diego. Uh, what I'd like to say is I wanna thank Council for honoring, uh, Rabbi Hyer and to all my Jewish brothers and sisters, we stand with you. Tomorrow I will be calling from one of the Catholic churches so I have an audience to make sure that we, uh, allow public comment. Uh, but Andrew, the gentleman who always calls, and I wanna hear what you wanna say, but you know, it's, it's getting tiresome to hear you attack Mr. DeLeon when you are the real violent human being. You and your friend, Ms. Dumont, and others who have hurt people, attacked people. I wouldn't trust you with my dog. Uh, so don't make comments about other people when you yourself are suspicious. Thanks again for honoring, uh, Rabbi Hyer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
There are no more callers.
Let's just give another minute for anybody to raise their hand if they're still on the line. All right. Has anybody raised their hand?
Yes, one person has.
All right, let's go ahead and take that speaker, please.
Speaker, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
Yeah, your one minute is supposed to say, not supposed to include having to say your name. Um, so my time should start over. My name's Susan Rocha from Council District One. Is my time starting over now?
No, just go ahead and keep speaking.
Go ahead?
Go ahead.
Divine Savior Catholic Church at six-ten Cypress Avenue, Cypress Park, nine zero zero six five. Get to bang their amplified sound system and their Oki tape recordings in my house ten times a day, every day. That needs a change. The CD One refuses to make any changes. Are they afraid of the Catholic Church? Who have taken me to court two, two times and they've lost two times because it was bogus claims that they came up with, but July's. But yet, I pay taxes and they don't, but I have to hear their banging tape recordings in my house all day. I would appreciate it if somebody would do something about the noise law because they are not exempt from the noise law.
Speaker, your time has expired? Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please begin your one minute of general public comment. Speaker with the last four digits, ninety-five nineteen, please begin.
Go ahead, speaker.
Speaker, you're unmuted. You may begin speaking.
That you got?
Yes, go ahead.
Lord?
Go ahead. We can't hear you, caller. All right, go to the next caller, please.
Next caller, please begin your one minute of general public comment.
Yeah, it's Eric Previn. Thank you. I'll give a one-minute general public comment. And for the record, once again, grew, put my arm down, which is extremely confounding and difficult. So, why don't you start by putting things like the LA Alliance settlement on the public meeting agenda so we can speak about it? It's important. It's a lot of money and we should have more transparency about that. And, you know, I think bulking up on LAPD Communications Department is probably a good idea given the challenges, but let's have some specifics on how that's gonna work since I know there's a huge group on the council who are trying to de-emphasize that kind of thing. And today is nine-eight-eight day over at the county. There's a long, long line of people lining up for nine-eight-eight. And I did hear a speaker at City Council saying the nine-one-one, uh, operators are leaving in droves. So, Hernandez, Soto Martinez, let's look at that. Is that true? What's the issues there? And can we do something better? And why in the frickin' world are we not taking, uh, verbal testimony from the telephone in these committee meetings, Bloomingfield? Wake up, Jaroslawski. Are you kidding me? That's valuable information from members of the public who are prepared to give voluntary public scrutiny of your corrupt-
Mr. Previn, your time has expired? All right, thank you very much. Next caller, please.
There are no more speakers on the queue.
Okay, let's give it one last chance for speakers who wish to offer general public comment. Raise your hand right now, please. All right. Are there any other hands raised?
No hands raised.
Very good. That will close general public comment. Mr. Clerk, what is now before us?
Mr. President, the council has motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, posted and referred. What's next?
The justice clear, sir.
Very good. Thank you, members. Uh, do we have any announcements? Any announcements, members, on my left? Any announcements on my right? Seeing none, are there any motions for adjournment, members? Councilmember Harris Dawson, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members. Uh, and I thank all of you for granting our request that we adjourn today's meeting in honor of a beloved community leader, a political activist, a social justice changemaker, uh, the one and only institution of South Los Angeles, Ms. Bobby Jean Anderson. Uh, she's a trailblazer and one of the most fierce activists of our time. She's dedicated her life to bettering, bettering the lives of those marginalized in communities from survivors of domestic violence to system-impacted individuals to large swaths of the community that was once Athens and once Watts and is now the one-oh-five freeway. Uh, Ms. Anderson's roots are in South Los Angeles, graduating from Fremont High School. Uh, but her impact was felt throughout the city and state. Uh, just a few achievements. Uh, she was a leader in SEIU, then called Local Six-Sixty. Uh, Local Six-Sixty had the, the distinction and Ms. Anderson was in the leadership of this to become the first majority African-American local union to elect a Latino leader as its president. Uh, someone who served with this, on this council later in his career. Uh, she had a forty-year career with the County of Los Angeles, twenty-five years as a public defender, where she established several programs and innovated several programs to help folks deal with the criminal justice system at hi, at the height of our policies of mass incarceration. Uh, Ms. Anderson was appointed by President Bill Clinton to the National Criminal Justice Task Force in nineteen ninety-five. She served as the Vice Chair of the LA Democratic Party for ten terms and also served five terms on the Democratic State Central Committee. She chaired the Black Women's Forum on Criminal Justice uh, and sat on our own city's redistricting commission, uh, I guess twelve years ago now. She served as a board member for the Genesee Center, uh, one of our most important domestic violence institutions in South Los Angeles. Um, and, uh, Ms. Anderson is just one of those people who is an institution in, in South Los Angeles in this county. But anytime anything was important happening, you went to the meeting, you should have the expectation that Bobby Jean Anderson was going to be sitting there and she was going to have something to say, uh, about whatever was going on. And so, um, we are very, very sad to see her go but warmly celebrate her contribution, her, and her achievements in our community.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hutt?
Mr. Chair, I, I thought I could, uh, get through this part. But Bobby was a friend, a mentor. A friend of my mother's. So when, uh, I got selected, appointed and seated here, she was texting me that she was proud. When, when we did various things here in the city like renter protections because she was such an advocate, she was texting me because of her pride. For the first time, I wore braids to City Council. For the first time, I wore braids to city council, she texts about the Crown Act and black women's hair. Those are just little things. As a member of New Frontier, and she was a past president, if you didn't do the right thing, she made sure that you were following Robert's Rules of Order. Same thing in L.A. County, Democratic Party, and she was, and she was a delegate, you know, for Clinton and for Obama. I got a chance, my sister and I did, to talk to her on December 20th. Her son put her on the phone, and she giggled a little bit. She sounded strong, but she, she's going to be missed, like, we are missing women in this city that are strong like that, and are not afraid to tell you that you need to go a different direction. Thank you for doing this adjournment motion in her honor. Her service will be the 18th of January. She was also a friend of Monica's, and I texted her, you know, when she passed away. But she's just going to be missed, and we need more people like Bobby. And I'm sorry for the tears, but it's an incredible loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Deleon?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson, thank you very much for introducing this to German in memory of an incredible woman, a friend of mine, you know, Bobby Jean. And Ms. Hutt, thank you very much for the profound emotion that you have demonstrated today, underlying the close connection that you had with this incredible woman, a pillar, not just in South LA, and not just in Democratic politics per se, or the Frontier Club, L.A. County Democratic Club, but you're right, she was a stickler in details with regards to the rules, and trust me, you know, I oftentimes caught the end of her wrath on Roberti's rules, and followed the details, and, you know, everything had to be, you know, exact to the point, which, you know, I respected, you know, tremendously, and, you know, getting the gentle, you know, slap on the wrist, what have you, you know, et cetera. But that was Bobby Jean, you know, in many ways. So an incredible woman, an incredible woman of color, an incredible black woman, an incredible Angelino, period. And it is sad, because, you know, we're losing folks hitting a certain age that have instilled such a profound sense of knowledge on many folks, and we're just hoping that other folks, you know, can carry it forward. So I just want to thank you very much, you know, Marquise, you know, for presenting this today, and thank you, Heather, very much for the, just the emotional outpouring of profound grief and sadness that this has had on you and your sister Ingrid, you know, and other folks in the committee. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for this adjournment. And Ms. Hutt, I know how devastating this has been for you, for all, everybody that had the blessing of knowing Bobby Jean. She was a friend to so many of us, and myself included, and I was very privileged to have known her. You know, Mr. Deleon, you talk about how we're losing, just over time, there has been a number of activists, of really, of individuals that have made a profound impact in our city. Bobby Jean was among those. One of the greatest things that we did, and I appreciated when you brought in, for example, Diane Watson, or when you, when we honor all of these incredible women that have, so often, you know, there's, there's a lot of men that always get celebrated, but it's the women that do the work. Bobby Jean was among those women, I think of Pat, I think of Rosa, I think of all these women in the Democratic Party that do incredible work to hold our feet to the fire, to call, you know, it's truth to power, they are always there speaking, and they are the ones that are leading the work, whether it's the New Frontier Democratic Club, or they're incredible leaders in the Democratic Party. They are, they are the folks that you always turn to and look to, to earn their respect. And I remember when Herb brought in Bobby Jean and honored her, it's important that we give people the flowers when they're alive, to hear it, to get the respect and the appreciation that they deserve. When Bobby Jean was, when her son started, when Ricky started taking care of her, I reached out to her, and she had shared with me that while, yes, she has a profound impact in South Los Angeles and a lot of roots and history there, she also has roots in Pacoima. That it was after her father was honorably discharged after service in World War II, and had established his, I believe it was a painting business, they moved to Pacoima, and they lived in Pacoima, in my district. And she had shared that with me, and how, you know, how much she appreciated the work and the effort of what we were doing, but I will forever be grateful for the friendship that she showed me. I remember when I was, it was back in 2017, and I was pursuing the endorsement for the Democratic Party, and I was stuck at an endorsement meeting, and she spoke on my behalf, before I had my, my 60 seconds to give my pitch for my endorsement, she spoke on my behalf, and I think I got, I finally arrived, and I, they gave me another 30 seconds to try and give my spiel, but I was so grateful to have her speak on my behalf. She was a great friend to so many of us, but she left a lasting legacy and indelible mark in this city, because she was unapologetic about being true to who she was. She was a great, great leader that understood about the strength of inclusivity, of being supportive of everybody, building, building relationships. She was the best at it. And her legacy will live on. She was a great, great woman, and I'm sorry that she, you know, she's always, they're always taken too soon, but we are all better for knowing her, and I'd ask, actually like to ask, with the profound impact that she's made in, in our city, that we make this an all-council adjournment. She is among those that is absolutely deserving of that recognition and tribute, and may she rest in power. We are forever grateful for having had a Bobby Jean Anderson in the City of Los Angeles.
Absolutely. Well said, and without objection, this will be an all-members' resolution. May she rest in peace. Councilmember Park?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise to deliver some somber news that deeply affects one of our own. Our colleague, Councilmember Price, is currently traveling to attend the out-of-state funeral for his beloved mother-in-law, Geraldine Taylor. On behalf of Councilmember Price, I would like to adjourn in her memory while sending our love and support to the grieving council member and his family. Geraldine Taylor, lovingly referred to as Jerry, was born on April 9, 1938, in Ocmulgee, Oklahoma, as the middle child and only daughter of Zula Ruth Yarborough and Sterling Lafayette Yarborough. She moved with her family at a young age to Wichita, Kansas, where she received her formal education from East High School and a certificate in computer programming from Wichita Trade School. Jerry was passionate about exploring the world, which led her to live in a number of different places, Oakland, Los Angeles, Panama City, Dayton, Ohio, New Jersey, and the United Kingdom. She also traveled to far corners of the world, places like Holland, France, Hawaii, China, Thailand, and Morocco. Once Jerry settled back home in Wichita, she began working at Beach Aircraft, which eventually became Raytheon, where she remained a dedicated employee for many years. However, later in life, her affection and devotion to children led her to pursue a career as a school, in the school district, as a bus monitor. As a woman of God and an avid churchgoer, Jerry accepted Christ at an early age and spent many Sundays at her mother's home church, Calvary Baptist. She ultimately became a member and served as an usher at St. Paul AME Church in Wichita, Kansas. On Wednesday, December 20, 2023, Jerry's spirit departed her earthly body at the age of 85 years old, with her family by her side. She is survived in loving, in loving memory by her friends and family, including her daughter, Dell Richardson Price, and son-in-law, our colleague, Councilmember Curran Price. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, and the condolences of the entire council go out to the Price and Richardson families. All right, are there any other motions to adjourn? Seeing none, members, let's make 2024 a great year for this council and for the city. This meeting is adjourned.
Our biggest ways of coming into contact with different community members, we have other people who've gone through the process and said, hey, this is where they helped me out, you know, you can reach out to this person that I talked to. And then, of course, our promotoras, they bring a lot of the foot traffic into the organization as well. We work with survivors from that very initial phone call, all the way through the court process, all the way through any accompaniments that they may need, and helping secure housing resources or any resources that are lacking at that time. The different challenges, and I know we're going to get into some of this, but the different challenges as to why people stay, what our organization does is try to help an individual overcome those obstacles, right? So that if it's money, okay, these are the resources that are in the community. Is it legal? Okay, this is, this is what's in the community. And so we have advocates that are certified, and we just kind of figure out, person by person, what their need is.
We're going to talk a little bit more about some of these services, but I have a question. The name of your center is Women's Center. Do you, because men suffer domestic violence as well. Do you help any men?
Yes, we do. We, all of our services are also available for men that are calling for our system. You know, we understand that this is actually-